Okay.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call, uh, March 3rd, 2022, meeting of the Budget Board and Selectments. Called to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Well said. Um, the, the package material I gave you is, is, the only thing that's not in this packet you received it tied to Roger was the, estimate for the, uh, for the repair of the Mack truck, as well as the equipment list. And, um, I believe he's got the, uh, updated road project, so he'll go through that, but, uh, right now, uh, the budget itself, that I provided that, gives you a, uh, total of eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. Which is up about, it's up about forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars, or about five to eight percent. Roger generally puts the budget together with the exception of the salary package. Um, Phil will be in that, uh, that sheet over there. Can you, uh, can somebody hand fill in those? Um, with the exception of under services, I added another ten thousand dollars in here of what Roger had to ask for, uh, specifically because of the, uh, Gill, Gillian fields, or the, um, fertilizer and some general maintenance of the, of the property, which we have a budgeted for in the past, so.
What's, what's that under Keith?
It's under services. Yeah.
Yep.
I added ten, ten thousand dollars based on the estimates that we received last year. I added those in.
Is that the field behind Milford Drive?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, we, we own that, uh, and we have a right of way across the, across the property.
Still just a, a baseball field and then like the
There's a
big shoes field.
There's a softball and baseball field there. Uh, last year, the Selectment, uh, provides authority to the, uh, local good league, spent a considerable amount of money there, along with some donated, uh, time from a bunch of vendors in the community, as well as, uh, Phil Labby's, uh, company really did a bad job of redoing the little So that field is, uh, pretty well set. It probably needs a little bit more, uh, setting for the upcoming year, but, uh, this upcoming year will do some fertilizing. Uh, then we have to determine the well system. Uh, we've got some testing that has come back. We'd like to try to get some water out there to irrigate if we can, so we'll work on that a little bit more as the, as the spring and summer roll around. I think so too.
Drain, drain the swamp that's around it, get rid of the mosquitoes at the same time. Drain the swamp and get rid of some of the mosquitoes around there at the same time.
One of the things I'm worried about in this overall is obviously fuel. I don't think anybody can predict what that's gonna be. It's in at twenty-eight thousand. Usually that's based on four thousand gallons, the summer use, four thousand gallons, and winter use. The usage is the same, it's just pricing. The most recent pricing off an invoice within the last week, we're paying three fifty-two per gallon for number two fuel, diesel fuel. Gas, I'm not sure that's right, but we're paying two sixty-six, and everybody knows what it is at the pump right now. So, I don't know whether they just haven't caught up to us or what.
Yeah, I, I looked at those, uh, those billing too. Roger's telling me it's absolutely spot on from the last bills that we received. I think the propane is what I think was running at three oh eight, three oh three or three oh eight.
Yeah, and I just got some at home and it was full fifty-two, so obviously the use is just different propane.
Right.
You get a better price depending on how much you use, but still, prices are all over the place.
Look at that one.
Yeah. More money than the twenty-five thousand.
Twenty thousand less.
Yeah.
Fifty cents yesterday.
I mean, it's, it's a crapshoot, folks. I mean, what do you do?
Are we on contract after so much? No?
We're not.
In fact, I don't believe you can get a contract. It's so volatile. They, they're not gonna lock you in without an escalator built into that price. Um, it was as of this morning.
It was as of last Thursday.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think unfortunately we may have lost an employee, uh, from his lack of attendance this past week, so we'll find out more come next week, I guess. Uh, well, he's been around since last.
We do have a, a new mechanic who recently started. He's been there, what? Just over a week. So things are looking up in that aspect. He seems to have a clue and we've got a new driver laborer who seems to be fairly well as well. Send him out, does his route, does it the way we expect, comes back in a timely fashion, so it's gonna take a while to get used to that.
Might not have to, might not want.
You're not, you're not looking now, are you?
Yeah. I hope for your sake he does.
Up until recently, it's been good that we've had a full crew without having to flip-flop routes and add on to this or that. Sometimes we've had two or three trucks sitting in the driveway because there's nobody to run it. So it's, it's getting better.
So, so Roger, I mean, you're thinking for that, for the fuel, I mean, five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, you shouldn't need to put more money in that than twenty-eight thousand dollars. Well, well, he just said there was what, four thousand dollar, four thousand gallons per
Per season.
Season, so it's eight thousand gallons. We can add probably should come up with a, uh,
Even at four bucks a gallon, that would give you thirty-two, and I'm not sure that's enough. Again, we're paying better prices than you would at the pump, by.
Four dollars a gallon. I'm not quite sure that, uh, depending on, you know, in the past several years, we've been flexible in terms of being able to save from funding in that budget, simply because we weren't fully staffed. Uh, I, I couldn't give you an answer that we could do that, uh, this budget if we're fully staffed. If we're fully staffed, I, I think that that would be form a challenge to add that money, uh, to, to absorb the money from the budget.
Agreed.
And this isn't in that, Roger, right?
Uh, that's under, that's, that's not in the maintenance. That's a, that's a separate thing in the equipment list.
Anything else? Do you want us to look at that number, or Dan, are you trying to come up with a number right now?
No, I mean, you guys, you guys are best to judge it. It's certainly, I'm pretty sure it's not gonna stay at that number.
We'll do some more work on it. We'll come back. I don't think thirty-two is enough, uh, based on
I think that figures out to about three fifty a gallon. That's where we are right now. It's only going up.
So we'll take another look at that, uh, and tweak that.
Everything else is pretty much basically the same, other than what Keith said was services. We went to that ball field last spring and it was not in good shape. It had, uh,
There was grub, some kind of grub.
There's a certain name for it. I couldn't come up with that right now, but it looked real tough shape and and they went in and did a bunch of work on it last fall. So depending on how the seed takes and everything, it looks really good compared to what it was. It was tough shape. So we've gotta stay up with that and at least maintain what they've done and keep it decent. Should be able to do that. I found another guy, the, the previous guy who took care of the mowing at the field for years, would go down with our mower over the field, weed whack where he needed to, bring the mower back, reset, fuel it, put it away, and I stopped checking on him a long time ago because I went and looked at it, I was like, he get done. We found, he retired. We found somebody else supposedly gonna pick up the ball. I know the guy. Matter of fact, I played baseball against him years ago, so he's, he's all about ball fields. So he should be good. He only wants to work one day a week and do the same thing. So in theory, we have an agreement with him to come to work first this spring when, when we need to. One of the things that we always seem to be over on is services. I did bring a bunch of copies, but I have one to pass around. Keep being reminded that we're not using state standard for markings, which is double yellow, center line. This is what we spent just on single. If we doubled what we do, that bill would close to double, the seventeen thousand dollars in road striping room. I would like to maintain this, what we have. Not all, any of the developments have a center line stripe, and they don't need it. We're doing more and more edge striping because we can't seem to keep people on the road while they're on their phone. But it's a problem. So that's one of the areas we have expanded that, but seventeen thousand bucks of striping once a year. A lot of towns do it spring and fall.
There are a few companies doing that too, right?
This one is the one that's been doing it for us for twenty-some odd years, almost thirty years. There's a few, but there's some good-sized ones. Kennybunk, or actually Kennybunk Port changed. They always use this guy. And two years ago, their paving season ran late, so they had another outfit that was a little bit, came in and did it. And when he called them up to say, "It's time to come and strike these roads that have been done there," they said, "We're done. We're not coming back." He ended up going back to these guys. So they've always treated us very well. When I've got a new paving job, they're usually pretty quick to get there and do it, even though it's not on their regular schedule. If they're in the area, they come in and do it.
So this isn't on the sheet here, right?
That's under services. That's one of the things that we do in services. I just wanted everybody to see that, to see where we are just on paintable, center line stripe, it's nuts.
See in March? No. Not in, not in the winter build, that's for sure.
It takes a lot of abuse from this time of year. We've talked about switching schedules. There's no way to do that without either not doing it one season and then picking up the following spring, or paying double that amount.
Any other questions on this? It's just a regular, uh, budget at this point?
Was, uh, building maintenance going? Need to do anything?
Fairly well. We have one door left in that building, which is over thirty-five years old. One left to replace. Intent is to do that this spring, and that will upgrade. That is a lot tighter than it was a few years back. So other than that, the building is still in good shape, still solid.
And when, uh, was it a couple of years ago that we had the salt shed reshaped?
Roof was redone on that, yes. There's a hundred square shingles on that thing. God bless that. So that's good for another fifteen years or better. We've gotta do some miscellaneous paving. That's a paved pad, and then the foundation for that shed, the concrete is set on favor, with the exception of the, the entrance that has a concrete slab in it, and it's all wire tied. We got everything in the walls. So we've gotta upgrade, do a little paving in there because thirty-some odd, well, thirty years now of running loader buckets across that floor, scat up, plus stuff like that. There's a little bit of a bird bath in the middle of it. Just for time. But other than that, that building is, is fairly solid. Anytime you store salt and sand inside a building that has concrete walls, you have to treat them, and if there's material left that doesn't get treated all the way around every year, it's treated with fifty-fifty mix of, uh, linseed oil and mineral spirits, and you just spray it on, wipe it down. That helps protect it because salt eats concrete. So over time, eventually. But nothing in the immediate future to do major to that building.
Yeah, yearly, the, uh, Main Municipal Association combined looks at some of our buildings, uses an assessment. There was just one section in that that I think we've already attempted to, that was, uh,
There's a few others, but basically it's out of the de-laminated concrete in a couple of spots, went in, shipped it out, drilled it, put some pins in it, resurfaced it, sprayed it back over. Superficial, but it keeps it sealed up. Structurally, it's still sound.
Yeah, do you wanna go through, uh, what do you wanna hit next? The roads or the equipment, or what the plan is?
Equipment. Out of it. There are no major surprises here, but one of the things that we have to do on this first truck, these things come through this particular one with a double frame. So you've got a frame over another frame, and what happens when you get sand and salt in between that? The frame starts to separate bulge, the suspension parts get skewed a little bit. I would have liked to have found two or three other places to get an estimate from. This is the only one around that we know of that's doing this. They did a fire truck for us a few years back. Or five years ago now, I guess. I'm not sure. But again, they're the only ones around. They're in Portsmouth. With us taking the body, valve gear and the hitch off, and they do the rest. This estimate, as you can see, is extensive. Replace this truck outright, you're looking at a quarter of a million bucks right now. Sixty-seven thousand dollars, we can fix this truck and get easily another ten years on it. It's got thirty-five thousand miles on it.
Two thousand five or two thousand six?
You know, on one of the tags on it says it's an oh-five, and another one says it's an oh-six. Production date is two thousand five, so all of our other trucks have a single frame. So the single ones are easy to get into. There's not enough places, many places, for that stuff to get in and work, corrode, rust and everything. It passed first sticker this year. I'm not so sure it would without doing this again. It only makes sense in my mind to fix this and get the extra time out of it, because right now, if you wanted to buy a new truck, we'd be hard pressed to find one. And anybody that's taken orders on these are well into twenty-twenty-three already for new chassis replacements. Chassis alone on this particular one, nobody gave me any firm prices, but you're in the hundred-and-fifty range to add chassis. Maybe a little under a hundred-and-forty-ish. With the steel prices keeping going up the way they are, I'm not sure how long that would hold. No one's giving any firm price on a chassis right now. It's a, it's a timeframe, and if you don't buy within that time, I'm gonna give us. One of the local towns are, one of the vendors came by and he was telling me that a local town had ordered a truck. It came in and it was like, almost five grand more than their original price. They said, "We want you to honor that original quote." And they said, "We can't do that." And they were kinda stuck. They had to pay it. Either that or they just turn around and sell it to somebody else. It's a real all over the place business right now as far as pricing on equipment.
This is Terry's favorite truck.
This is his, this is his baby.
So what we, what we do is, uh, in our capital improvement, uh, program, which, once we get to all those, provide to, we're gonna continue to hold the line at a hundred thousand dollars within the capital budget for equipment replacement with public works. So out of that hundred thousand, as you can see, we're probably gonna spend almost sixty-eight thousand just taking care of this truck, get the, the additional warranty out of it.
What's in there now?
Um, I think, what'd you say, about ten grand?
That, that, that ten, one, twenty-seven, is that what? That ten thousand, one twenty-seven is what is called the sweep account, which is basically a reserve account. Any money that's left over from equipment goes in there. There's actually a balance right now in that account. I don't have the sheet from
It's gotta be a little over twenty grand now, correct?
Yes, it is. So I think it, it actually comes out to, that's the one with all my hands scratching on it, so I'm looking for it. There's thirty-eight thousand available, plus Oh, that's something. It's here. Yeah, thirty-eight, seven, one seven, available. That would include sweep or reserve account, the remaining balance of this past year's stuff. So that's what's available. So if you had a hundred and thirty-eight, you could actually make our payments on the loader and that bobcat, the mower, and fix this truck, and I think it comes out to be like five hundred bucks difference. Yeah. Five hundred and sixty-seven dollars we'd have to take out of operating budget, but that, what, in effect, that will do is wipe out any surplus you have.
Mileage show there.
Jack, can you speak up a little bit? We can't hear you.
Yeah. Notice that, uh, the climate is not listed for most of the vehicles. Great. Is that really relevant in this feature? Right now, a long-term replacement plan. Oh, it is on school buses.
Yeah, the mileage is not as big a factor on this stuff as it would be on a bus, for instance, that runs a set route every day. I mean, this is based on, you know, this truck runs pretty much every time it snows, and in the summertime, not so much, but if we've got any haul jobs, that's one of the trucks we use. So the mileage is, as you can see, what's the truck, fifteen, sixteen years old, and it's only got thirty-five thousand miles on it? But thirty-five thousand miles on a Mack of that vintage is absolutely nothing, really. So it's got a lot of service left in it.
I think you'll see, uh, Jack, when we begin to replace the equipment moving forward, that a lot of our larger trucks, um, will probably be in service a lot longer than the smaller pieces of vehicles that we have. The, the Fords that we have right now will probably be replaced well before this Mac ever gets replaced.
No question.
Series of it because of their use and how much we use, you know, the weight on that too. I think that person will come by about three o'clock this morning. Probably did. That zeros out.
If we fix this truck and make our payments, that would basically zero out our, any reserve we would have for equipment.
Care of all the priorities that you have listed, twenty-two down.
It does. We've got a decent rig down of, oh, that should last us a long time. This truck two, the next one down, this is from that Volkswagen grant? That's a pretty nice truck for thirty-three grand. That's what we get in it. Uh, truck three is an older five fifty. Those things, we, we stretch a little more out of them than most, any other public works that are, it's getting out of them. Some of these things spend a good part of their life dealing with emissions that are ongoing. Truck four is another truck. It's fairly old. It's got a hundred thousand miles on it, but it's still solid. That's a single frame truck. All the suspension, everything is in good shape on the truck. Five is another new five fifty. We've gone to gas jobs on those. Sure that was the right thing to do, but they were twelve thousand dollars cheaper than the get, the diesel package. This one, last year we thought, get hit by lightning because it had an electrical gremlin in it. It lost everything. So we took it down there and they said, "Oh yeah, it needs a electrical bobcat." Basically, it fused out. It's done it again since then, so apparently it's one of Ford's better ideas. The backhoe is basically a reserve unit. We keep it because we use it occasionally. When the excavator's tied up on a job, we still use it to come back. As at the transfer station, do whatever, any loading in the doyad. We kept it when we bought a loader a few years ago, figuring that we don't really have to put much in it. It's, it's kind of a reserve unit, but in a big snowstorm, it comes in handy. The crater last couple of years hasn't run a lot. One dirt road we get left down, Bill does another job of greatness that I can get there to do. We use this one for grating shoulders and such. The next one, truck eight, that's something we bought through the Forest Freedom Power pedal surplus. I got three hundred bucks in that truck. There's no immediate plans to replace it. That's got forty-some-odd thousand miles on it. The, uh, the one that we were planning on re-bodying this year, obviously this Mac takes priority over that. We can weld a few patches on that body and get by with it. Pretty soon, the patches will probably go all the way to the tailgate, but it is what it is. The other one won't do us any good if it's not rotted.
That's a, that's what everyday use of a plow.
Yes. Truck nine, yes. The bobcat is brand new, sitting out here in the shed. It's real handy down here when it snows. It also, we have a mower for it, so it does any of the mowing on the rough grounds around that it don't get mowed. We also use that to mow the landfill. Twelve was that John Deere mower that we got. We finally got most of the gremlins out of that last year. One of the things that John Deere was chasing it for turned out it was another issue altogether. It was overheating constantly. That's been squared away. That should last a long time.
Yeah, with the over side of the road.
Yes. Yep. Got a twenty-two foot boom on it with a rotary mower. Unit thirteen is a part-time worker. Unit 13 is a part-time water truck. That's something that the fire department replaced a few years back. That thing's got like 22,000 miles on it. Runs like a clock. One of these days we'll have a few more plugs and a water tank on it. So when you want to use it to water a project, all you have to do is drive it across there rather than try to pump it out. Buy a, go to track to supply and buy a thousand gallons, plastic tank, put on it. There you go. Uh, these other units. 15 is a pickup that I beat around with most of the time and everybody asks me, when are they going to buy a new truck? And I tell them, we don't need them. This does everything we need. We use it every day to put signs on jobs. The signs get dragged in over the side, all over the place. Be a prime change to put a new truck out on the road, do that to it.
Nobody would know what you're coming, when you're coming. That one kind of stands out.
You can hear it too. Basically 15, 16, and 21 started out life as all the same. They were pickups. And we converted the rear end and made light dump trucks out. So this 16 is a patch truck we also use as a, as a chip truck. Excavator is five years old. That's not going anywhere right off. We've got to put some tires on it this year. 18, we're going to get a new cruiser at some point. So we get the old one out of that fleet. The code office uses it.
Correct. That's the plan. They're, they're supposed to purchase it. I believe they've ordered it. Just waiting for it to come in and then move to the swap and we'll get rid of the cruisers out here and then take one of the, uh, sheriff's deputies cars and make that a, uh, a vehicle that we use around here. And nicely about it, it will be something with all-wheel driving. So when the code enforcement officer doesn't have to run up to public works to grab a pickup truck or a truck to, to go to inspection when it's off the road. So.
19 is a truck that we got from surplus. We made it out into a chip truck. This thing, a time you go and buy, stop and take a look at this truck. It is immaculate inside. It's amazing. It was a FEMA truck. That's got 16,000 miles on it, something foolish like that. There's no miles on it. We were looking for a smaller chip truck. This came along and said, well, this is what it is. We made a chip truck out of it. Does a good job. This other one was supposed to be a replacement trout, a plow truck. We get that, then Volkswagen came along with that grant money. So we made this a straight truck. We use it in the winter time, treat work. In the summertime, hauling gravel or whatever. To be honest with you, because these other trucks are a little heavy, this is the only truck we have that we could go to date, load it, go over the scale and still be road leading. Everything else because of the file gear and stuff that we take the hitches off of, but they're heavy. This one's not. Again, 21 is another one of those that started out life as a pickup. 22, I think everybody's seen that before. That's that military five ton. It's, it's our backup truck. It does a good job. If we had a real big storm, we'd get a V plow that we could actually put on. The last time we used the V plow, that when I was here was 1993 in Blizzard. So we never bow more than two inches of snow at a time anyway. But if we had to, we could. This next one's no one's favorite because it goes by her house. This is that cab over. This has got less than 10,000 miles on this truck. It's got a Caterpillar diesel one that's got an Allison transmission. It's got common parts on it. It's got the best visibility of any plow truck we've got. It's a military deuce in there. 24 is the newest loader. All the other stuff is miscellaneous stuff. We've got problems around our compactors right now, but I think he's going to make a trip to half a freight buyer. He motor for it. Get another five years out of it anyway. I think priority wise though, over rebodying that truck nine, we've got to fix this truck because more than likely next year it will not pass inspection the way it is. Wish to have more options as to who does this stuff. Doesn't seem that way.
But you don't see, uh, based on what kind of went through here, you don't see a replacement cost on anything for next year, right?
Next year possibly, you could rebody that truck nine. But beyond that, eventually those 550s will start to peter out. We'll have to replace those as we go. But the other ones that you could see, some of these have no immediate replacement base. Because they work too well, just the way they are. Somebody gave him a mic. I can't hear.
Pretty old, pretty old. And, uh, I'm wondering if the maintenance dollars for the equipment is high enough, it was higher previous years. We reduced down to 38,000 per year. Is it, do we have enough money in here, uh, to take care of the cage fleet at 38,000?
That's a better way to state it. Because of some of the things that we've upgraded, like the Lotus, one of the truck, those 550s, two of them are, one of them's one year old, yeah, no, two years old. The other one's straight. Uh, I think, yeah, we're in pretty good shape overall. One of the biggest maintenance nightmares we got rid of was that trackless. That thing was forever broke. This other mower should be cut down on some of the, the cost of that. Trackless is one of those things that everything you buy comes from them. It's no going down a napper or someplace and buy a pot. It's proprietary. They won't even, the numbers don't even cross over. It's crazy. That thing went to auction and we waved as it went.
Didn't shed a tear on that one then.
No, no, no. That was a hard to encourage anybody to work on anymore.
I guess for me, I think, you know, the, looks like we're in good shape. You know, the Jason's point, you know, we wipe it. We pay everything off, we wipe off, wipe out our capital, our reserve, but doesn't look like there's a need to have, there's always a need to have money in there, but it doesn't look like there is an absolute need for the, for the following year. I just don't want to leave that capital reserve zero. Something happens during the year. This equipment pretty much takes quite a beating. So I'm going to have to look at that, make sure that there's some extra money in that capital reserve, right?
When would this work be done?
If all went well, what I would like to do as soon as the winter season is over, ship that thing.
This, this thing is dated January.
Yep.
Uh, entitled estimate preliminary.
He said, one of the things, this is kind of like a can of worms when you open it up, but this was worst case scenario.
It was.
The sections of that frame that probably could be salvaged, but you don't know that until you've taken the other frame off. And what do you do then? They take the cab off this thing. They take box and all that stuff off. It's going to be one side. You can all tie together, move the other side. Pretty expensive work. How long is that going, is he going to have this?
That's the one that shows up. Right now it is at least three months behind. That thing went down there in May there. Beyond that, then it would be easily ready for the late summer or the fall.
So it would be beyond, because we don't have the money in the, in the capital right now to cover it, but it would be into
Correct.
Into the, the new cap.
And our plan, our capital plan, I don't, I don't have the whole sheet here because we've got fire on there as well, but um, is, is to continue to put a hundred thousand dollars aside in that capital for the next several years to, to sort of build it up and then be in a position where, when these things happen. To, to your earlier point though, if we, if we ever get to a point where we just needed something and we didn't have any more money left. I mean, we'd have to go, we'd have to have a conversation with you folks and see what direction we want to go in. And if we had to, we could always go back to, uh, a special town meeting to try to allocate some funds and do something. So I'm not really concerned about it. I think we've got the money in there. They've got a good, solid plan forward. I think we will accomplish what we need. Jump ahead, put the vote yet, but I hate moving forward with a zero balance capital. I don't think that's a good idea. Would there be a way though, Roger, to take like 50,000 on the road? Not do a project that's allocated between 50,000 and capital. Is it, is it the 700,000? I don't think she's taking or presenting a year behind from a, uh, I don't want to jump ahead.
Well, actually, there's an explanation for that. So that's 700,000. There's an option in there. We're talking about 2022 program. That's what, it's 2022. I think 2022.
Roger, what do you have here? Is it 2023 or 2022? The ones that just coming up this year, 2022 projects. Uh, River Road Section 1 is one that we already flip-flopped, traded for the stone road with last year. It seemed to make sense. They were about the same value. Losing Ripstone Road. So it makes more sense to do these as a group anyway into River Road Section 1, River Road Section 2, the Rose Bridge Road, the tie right in the um, came up board line to the railroad tracks. At the top. You could ever get the top, the reason that's in there is because of the box can't grow that. Try that in myself as well. The funny thing is if we could have a good phone company that will move on that hole over there to get that intersection done. But we have some options on this because look at that sweep account again. Got a $92,000 balance unspent in this year's budget. There's a $102,000 sitting in that sweep account. Makes 194, 979. Obviously you wouldn't post 7 and 7A on clear view. So there's a reduction one way or the other there. So we have 500 and something in roads now. The appropriation has been.
We, we bumped it last year because it was a little bit larger than that. We moved it up to 507, 507. Yeah, 507, 226 and I'm, and I'm recommending to keep it the same at 507, 226 for the upcoming year. Along with what's in there already, we'll get, we'll accomplish the first three things on, uh, on the sheet that he has here. It totals 477, 696. So for River Road 1, I think it's, uh, it's only a portion of that. You know, that is from getting a board down line to the road bridge. That actually was originally scheduled for last year. We get Ripstone Road instead, switched it over. Patch right now is a hundred and 25 dollars a ton. I figure it costs us at least double that, put it out. Maybe for 72 dollars a ton. So it'd take too long to figure out the 375 dollars a ton of patch plates. It's a band-aid that don't last. We don't do a lot of patches. We've been lucky enough to get the, keep these things in line so that they don't need a lot of patch.
So in, in doing what you suggested, that still, that still doesn't leave money to swap over and put into the capital. You know, we're still at zero capital.
Correct.
But you could still maybe not do roads at the cost of the, of paving with that. You know, just, yeah, but what's happened?
This is budgeted at $80 a ton. Really? Am I sure of that? I don't know. It's tied to fuel. If something happens there, we probably, you know, we're probably looking at shaving this back significantly just to cover our costs and get some.
Last, last year's price was 72 dollars a ton in place. Calling in the most right now, they're going to tell you what the liquid, that's all the cost is today. Put an escalator on.
Lose a barrel of fuel yesterday, a hundred and 15 dollars a barrel.
This, this is really a fracture because we don't know where this thing's going. And for every year, I think I had minimal, the policy is $80 a ton. Those are 35. Problem on some of these. Take them out of the layup. Obviously even a slider back schedule wise, which is not the end of the world, but if they get into the point where you stop patching heavily, you've thrown good money after bad.
So basically the way it stands, we've got enough money to cover the roads, but we don't have anything. We have the capital reserve.
We're going to have a reserve account. From a, from that standpoint, several road projects can defer.
Yeah.
If you've got a good seller price, pay it anytime much before, it's the late April, first of May. It's usually open sometime around that time.
You know, if we get that number, we may be able to come back to y'all and say, okay, you know, what do you want to do now? Now that we don't have a firm number. Right now it's a, like you said, $80, $80 a ton in place. It could be 10, 15% moving. We don't know.
Well, I mean, at that point, you know, Roger would know what, what he needs, what he can do with the budget that was allocated to him and
Correct.
And either come back or whatever you have, but you know, to come back for more money, whether it be for, because those prices went up or to come back for more money because a truck broke down and we got to spend another 20, 30, 40,000 dollars. You know, where is that money going to come from?
Well, if it's after the town meeting, it would have to come from surplus. So that's where it would have to come from. And, you know, right now, I think the last time I, I told you we had 3.2. Somewhere around a little over $3 million in there right now.
And we're going to take some of that.
Yeah.
And move that over.
Yeah, I'm making a recommendation this year to add another 100K to our annual, uh, to anticipate revenue from 300 to 400. So there'll be another 100,000 there that, that are anticipating. And then we had a discussion the other night, what are we going to do with playground out here? And now we wanted to try to do something with that. So some other challenges that we, you know, we'll have to make some decisions on, but I think worse comes to worse on the equipment if it fails.
I, I mean, I understand what I would take some failure. I don't, like our company's making a shift, right?
Next year we got a hundred thousand that's going into it. So, uh, I mean, it will, if we start building a little bit, we have some, we have some, uh, lease purchase, uh, obligations that we got to pay for, but little bit at a time. I think the plan here is a good plan.
Basically, we're going to get two on, on these loans. So those have been this for another.
What's the total amount? The loans that we have to pay?
Well, we have the, uh, uh, we have the Bobcat, we have the, uh, or on the top of this sheet right here, yeah. They, this pays.
71,000?
Yes.
So we put a hundred thousand in next year. We really only have $28,000, $28, $29,000 in that capital.
Yep.
That's a whole lot of money.
Are you guys advocating more? Obviously more.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
I, I, I don't know that we necessarily need to add more in, but I wouldn't mind, like, we know that the price of paper is going to go up. So let's just, instead of saying we have $500,000 to spend on paper, let's say like we have 450,000 to spend on paper. And assure $50,000 goal over capital. Or, or maybe even 25,000.
Or, or maybe even twenty-five thousand, just zeros, just here.
Taking down those there when something happens, you're talking special town meeting, anything to that effect, right? Don't think anybody.
No. Question.
Yeah.
And I'm the one advocating.
Never mind, let's move forward.
I'm the one advocating for it at this point. But I, you know, I guess there is, there's still a couple of factors that we don't know about. Yeah, one big one for me is, uh, trying to get a better, uh, another better handle on what our overall value is going to go. I mean, the last two years, we had, we had twenty million and twenty-two million. Yeah, this year, I've only averaged, I've only, uh, factored in eight total. So even if we get half, there's another ten million there, uh, which will help us in, in terms of, uh, the, the taxable properties that are out there that. That will be adding to our, uh, uh, ability to, to have some money to, to do things, so. Uh, that's still, you know, a gray area right now until I get a better, until we get a better handle on it.
And the past couple of years, you've been pretty conservative with that anyway, right? I really don't see that being any different this year.
I agree.
You know, everything is, valuations of everything is caught up, so, you know, once we get more stuff that's happened over the cottages, we get more, more housing that's, you know.
So this, so this conservative taking that gamble on not having any money in the capital reserve is pretty, pretty steep, isn't it?
Well, I mean, you know, the, I don't want to have to go through a whole other special town meeting, I mean, if we don't have to, right? I mean, to me, it's just make sure that we get funds available somewhere that we can swap, I know we're limited as to what we can move around, but. Rather not go to a special town meeting if we didn't have to.
Correct.
I'd like to throw something else at you. And it's, it's a savings?
Yeah.
No, it's not, because you've got somebody jogging right now to get approaching people to put another road on them. This, uh, this company is for a road, there's three or four out there right now that are coming. It's going to kill us. And I don't know when is my last time that I run the board against, except for the, that's something you're going to have to really strongly consider what you're going to do. Because if you end up with.
Uh, his songs.
It's a true way, snap move between Dayton and, uh, Greystone, which is Walton Woods. Or Laura Lane and that old bridge terrace, he ain't going to meet the timeframe to be able to present that deal this year, because the pavement service is going to be over ten months prior to acceptance, right? So he's screwed on that, but that's coming next year guaranteed. Uh, Conifer Way, which is White Mines, you're going to see that one this year.
Which one?
Uh.
Okay, Conifer Way.
Yeah. It's White Mines subdivision, Conifer Ways are down the road. Hey, the road, that's been built for a while, the whole, the whole was up there building, but I'm not going to chase it, take it over. But the backbreaker of the whole deal is going to be when this one presents you with. Bartlett Farms.
Yep.
A few, a whole couple of sites in that thing. You can drive it there, it lost. I have.
Yes.
So these things, that's going to be the biggest challenge for the town.
But we also could probably end up at some point in time, you know, one of our biggest fears is getting, uh, Route One, one one.
Seventy-five hundred people population wise, not going to have a boat now, you're going to get it.
Right.
Route One, I don't know what they do with one eleven, I can't possibly see us being getting one. On Route One, you get, and Lock Haven, you can for sure. So this four miles plus Lock Haven goes on a street, that was seven miles of road.
Yeah, but we're never, we're not even close to seventy-five hundred yet.
Both of those are up to jump, keep those in houses, but then again.
Well, you have, again, if it's come, the state, they're infamous way, so we could just say, hey, you know. And we're the only one right now that's got to move on. I know, Wells.
But Gunfoot does not, it's the only one on other town in North County that does want to. I don't know, Fox, Tom, Barry, it's a. State gets us one per mile. Four grand, something like that.
Yeah.
It's a joke. Why, it's a joke.
Well, let, let's not worry too much about stuff that's still ten years down the road.
No, sooner or later, it's turn around, it's there.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, it's a long, it's a long way away.
Yeah, but you've got the one.
It's a big, it's a heavy stuff.
You've got one coming next year, is it going to bother us that much to get enough trucks down there, we wouldn't have to add anything. We can buy those farms, that's another guy, another truck. Period.
You're talking about Bartlett Farms, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, sure. Oak Ridge Terrace, we can probably cover that one, that's also, it's going to be.
We're about to spot the front floor, David.
That's off the old Alford Road. Well, you only see a few houses. From the Alford Road, driving this.
Driving this.
It connects, it connects all the way over to Liberty Acres.
Comes right out of his background. They're, they're almost built up, I think they got maybe three lots left.
Yeah, he's getting close to being full, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they did, they did the extension, they paid that last fall, so. I would imagine at some point in time next year or the year after, he's going to come, I don't, I don't know if he, if he plans on it or not, but I guess.
He should.
Yeah, I'm sure, it would surprise me personally. I know, I know now, I know some people that are in that development now. And they complain about the snowplow because it's private, he does it, and they complain about it. So you know that they're going to say, yeah, you know, but.
You mentioned, assume with forty small houses, I mean, if they got, they're going to be there to tell you.
No, you don't, the final, yes, I think it's forty-nine houses total in that development.
Uh, I think originally, I was told it's forty-four, and they're. It closes their. It, the status, there's one that's going to last, yeah, there's one in there now, there's only two lots, I think that.
Uh, anything else on roads at this point? But, you know, to, to his point, as municipal officials, particularly the, the, uh, board of selectmen, these folks are going to have to. Decide how you want to, how you want to move forward with these private roads that will be coming to you as public roads. It's a. It's a tough one, because at one token, we're asking them to build them to a town standard that can be accepted. And the other token, you know, sometimes people are saying, well, geez, I don't know if we can afford to take on that road. So those are the kinds of, the decisions that need to be made as well, so.
Right now, we don't accept any roads. We have a policy, we don't accept, we got to go through the petition process.
Right.
Well, period. Yeah, that's that I got to get a hundred, however many.
Yeah, I don't know what the number is.
Yeah, I don't either, it's ten percent, right, it doesn't last.
But they're still going to pay the taxes.
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
Yep.
Hard time. I think that they should.
Sure. Anything else on roads?
I don't know, it's a subdivision.
Some, no, some of them.
Yeah.
Well, subdivision, well, people don't go in, it's just never.
It wasn't down the track.
Was that?
There's a couple of years in town right now, I want to talk long on it.
Yeah.
It says that, right, and they've already approached us. To take it over.
Yeah, they said, yeah, just take it over, we check it over.
That works, that works.
Yeah.
To find anybody to plow? Like, to find people to plow, good luck. Nobody does it anymore.
Yeah.
We got, we haven't done it for like seven years, people called us all, they still call us to plow. Because they can't find.
Well, so with that, now. Thanks for being very bad news, Roger.
Yeah.
Well, you're, I'm really going to hit him now.
I'm glad I made it for this uplifting discussion.
Well, we're going to, we're going to hit you. We're going to hit you with an excellent.
In on bad shape, you won't ride our roads and then go some other place.
Yeah, I always appreciate others.
I'm going to bolt just after a snowstorm. I have a feeling that everybody is on their own. Years of wind scraping all this stuff.
He has to come to us by the night.
What's that?
Of a truck body, a tow truck, a fixed tow truck.
Yep. You're going to have to give us approval to spend that money. You find some more estimates, that would be great, but like, as he says, uh, you know, I'm trying to think, gee, uh, I don't think anybody in the. Anybody north of us doing any of that.
Another one in Manchester, they're not doing it.
Yeah, how about Dover Automot, they doing any frames anymore over there, Dover? Yeah. Make some fire.
I've asked some of the truck vendors to make sense.
Yep. It's a pretty specialized work.
Yeah.
It's very difficult to find a lot of people that are doing it.
Yeah, one of the fire trucks that did for us already, same rate, double frame. Those things don't live in this crap that they put out on the roads as much, they're just driving, it gets in there eventually. First, it's magical.
Right. Who's in fire and trying to get a single frame? Put it up like that, but for the show, really, to get a bag, you make one of that. I, what, that Mac makes a single frame for that truck?
We couldn't get an answer on it, for sure, the guy didn't believe that Mac made.
Single frame.
Have you knew these single frame?
Yeah.
To replace on that truck. If you expect it right from the beginning, originally, that was sold to us as a, a second frame, unit.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And it came through double frame?
Okay. And they tell you, oh, that's a double frame, it's just a sad, they're going to sound better, double was better, but it's not, not for foggy.
Okay, um, moving on. The next one for us is, and I want you to stay, I don't want you to leave. Next one is the transfer station.
Yeah.
And, yeah, you, you try to try to sneak out, the door just locked, so you couldn't get back in if you left, so. Um. What I have here is, uh, essentially just two, two quotes, the first one, under budget, uh, status quo. It's just an overall increase of the seller of three percent to operate our transfer station. It would keep in place, uh, the. The punch card system where folks would continue to use the punch cards, so on and so forth. The next option, uh, which increases the, uh, the budget substantially, is to, um. Allocate through tax dollars, uh, the ability of every resident to, uh, to get rid of your household trash and recyclables. Uh, free of charge, so in other, in other words, they would just take their trash up, get rid of it. The only thing you would have to pay for that would be any white goods, uh, any, uh, any other, uh, R and D demo. Things that, of that nature that you'd be getting rid of, so.
Appliances, stuff like that.
Correct. All that stuff would have to be paid for at the station, but this, uh, this proposal here provides, um, saves, uh, the ability to, every resident to get rid of the trash, so. There are two numbers there, obviously, uh, one twenty-four, four eighty-five would keep it, uh, essentially the way it is now. Up from, uh, one seventeen, nine ninety-eight, the other one would be, uh, two eighty-one, seven eighty-five, which would increase it. By a hundred and, overall, it'd end up going up a hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars, or about a hundred and. Just over a hundred and thirty-eight percent, almost a hundred and thirty-nine percent, if you look at the percentages, so. Um, but the actual for the, uh, disposal of the trash would only, would go up a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred. Remaining of that balance is with our landfill remediation program, uh, testing, uh, well water, all those kinds of things, so. Um, and I've equated that out to what it would be per, per household, per a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, what it would be on your taxes to make up that difference, so. Um, just going to tell us which way you go, my recommendation, based on the frequency. The, the way that, the way that's, the transfer station is set up. Uh, it would be far more beneficial for us and for Casella to have the trash and the recyclables. Just deposited in for our residents to move through, so my, I would be advocating.
Status quo, that.
No, I would be advocating to put that additional money onto the tax roll and pay for it, as opposed to doing the, uh, punch cards for hustle trash and recycling. I think that's an important change, uh, it's a tough change, but, uh. It's really not a bad deal case when you.
Figure what people are paying punch cards over the course of a year.
Sure.
You know, it's going to, it's going to make a difference in the bill rate about thirty-four, thirty-five cents, but when you figure the average guy is probably going to go through four or five punch cards in twenty months of. Right. Or, you know, and I think it would make a big difference on this part, if you get people in and out, you know, you have passing around, you cover the guy, more of your stuff.
Right.
Decide whether you got one punch or two.
Right, you'll see your sticker, you'll get rid of your stuff, and you move on your way, so.
This would be for a non-resident.
Correct.
Totally.
Correct.
My, my concern is. How such a. How, how do you really control it?
Well, I think we've, we just recently, uh, changed our policies, um, it added, added, uh. If who can get new, new car, new, uh, transfer station stickers, new stickers are now available. You, you have to have a, uh, you have to be a resident of a rundle, and you have to bring in your, your vehicle, uh, registration. And it has to be earmarked for a, uh, registration for a resident who lives in a rundle, so.
If that's here or this building, that happens, I'm talking about outside.
If they don't have a sticker, they don't dump their trash, so they need a sticker in order to dump trash.
Plus, if it doesn't get police up at the transfer station, it's really on Casella. Casella's going to wind up with more stuff that they, like, gather from this, they go to a fixed price on this.
Correct.
So it's their problem, if their guy is not on the ball enough to say, hey, you don't want a sticker, take your trash, some of their else.
Well, they want to put in a, they want to put in a, uh, gate to collect funds for other things other than trash and recyclables. So if you come in. Correct. You still have to have a sticker in order to get in.
About non-resident taxpayers.
Unless they're, non-resident taxpayer, does he have a house here?
Yeah.
Then if he has a house here, then he can get rid of trash.
Yeah, because you were saying their registration, but their registration might be for.
Seasonal cottages. Right, seasonal cottages, same thing, that applies.
They take care of those folks, because people show up.
Yeah, I, I got asked, I got asked that about somebody in a seasonal cottage.
Right, the ones that we're not going to take will be a president, a person who owns land here.
Yeah.
And expects to go up to the transfer station because they own property here, but they don't have a house here, so nobody's residing here.
Seasonal cottage folks would have to show that they are the resident there.
Correct.
Who'd issue them a sticker.
I just correct.
Or they, they show their tax bill, they've got a tax bill, they own property.
Whatever, that or.
Yeah.
There was a false rumor going around that somebody was going to be up there Saturday passing out stickers.
That, that is a false rumor, that wasn't true.
We, we, we were told that at our selectmen's meeting.
I said a Saturday, I didn't say this Saturday.
You said Saturday.
I better look at the tape.
You said Terry and Roger are going to be there Saturday.
I'll have to look at the tape.
That's why I posted that.
They will be up there a Saturday, but not this Saturday.
Okay, you got it squared away. That's all right.
So, I mean, there's a lot of discussion there, I don't know how you want to handle it, uh.
I have some concerns because there's people in this town who pay to have their garbage picked up, okay?
Yeah.
And, and it's people who can't get them dumped, and that's why they have their garbage picked up. Uh, and now we're going to say, okay, you're going to subsidize the rest of us who can get up to the transfer station. That troubles me a little bit. Um, uh, you know, because then we're, we're basically, uh, taxing people or increasing their tax bill, uh, and they get, not getting any of the service, basically.
And it's not charged.
Well, no, it isn't, but if you pay as you throw, then the guys are using it.
Yeah.
We pay for it.
Is that more like it, like it?
But when we had talked, if that means, when we talked about possibly bringing another guy, like on a Sunday or something? We talked about it, but right now, Casella hasn't, uh, shown any traction for that, and I think it's primarily, uh, because of staffing issues that they're having.
But they're going to have to have people there anyway to handle the white goods, et cetera.
Right.
Somebody's going to have to be there.
Right.
Check the stickers, so it's not like Casella's not gonna be there to watch you throw in a bag and cut your car. Because right now, it's just not weight, it's just how many bags you got.
Right.
And she goes.
Right.
Yeah.
But to Tom's point, you know, you could have some people that, okay, they can, they can wheel their trash barrel to the end of their driveway, but they don't really have a means to pick that thing up and put it in their car and bring it to the dump.
Yeah.
And there's probably a bunch of them like that. I don't know.
They don't want to. I mean, I talked to some lady, she said she didn't care. Her barrels were going out of the road, she didn't want to have to go.
Right.
It was inconvenient for her, I have to sort of.
Right.
Sure.
Okay.
I'm able to schedule that stuff.
I did just, I think we gotta think about that. I, I understand your point, John, that, you know.
Do we have any?
There's two ways of looking at it.
Right.
It seems to me that one little extra you pay on the bill rate for the convenience of just being able to go up there. I'm asking about the wiring tickets, all that, and you just.
Do we have any idea, is there any way to know what that percentage is, what the numbers are?
I don't know. I can tell you in my subdivision, I'm the only one who goes to.
Right, yeah. I mean, I see more and more people with dumpsters or people that leave their trash cans on the road, like dumpster days, so I'm curious, but.
Yeah, they got dumpsters, somebody can fix it.
No, I know, but we, there are still our, you know, pay taxes in our town, so I'm just curious if there's a way like.
Oh, yeah.
And, and, uh.
And you throw household trash and stuff in there, right, Phil?
Six, eight hundred dollars a quarter.
At least.
And Phil, you, you throw household trash in that, in your dumpster, right?
Whatever fits in the dumpster goes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And they never complain.
All your employees just throw their trash in the.
No.
I tried to tell him.
They know. Just kind of. Yeah, in punch card, because we fill the dumps almost every week.
You know, one of the things that makes us seem a little bit of a sticker shop, because we jumped a point here, but we have been getting away with it for a while. We said we had a change in management, they finally woke up and said, oh, we got a problem with our.
We've been saying this, Ryan, Tom and I have been saying this, we go to the dump all the time. It's cheap. It's cheap.
Yeah.
They were, their mentality before was we're all around you, it's not a big deal, we don't wanna make any money. And then they had a change in management. These guys began, it's like, oh, wait a minute.
That was the mentality. Remember, when we first met, uh, the oldest gentleman there.
We saw this coming. How long ago? And we complained, but it came to you, and you showed us what we were paying. Because we used to pay a ticket fee plus trucking, every time one of those cans left the truck, it'd be eighty bucks. That's since gone up to two or something, forty or something like that. So we thought, wow, that whole cans are only half full, how could that be? And looked at the contract, we were getting a little further.
So you guys are gonna have to, you know, struggle with that.
Yeah.
We wanna handle it. If you needed more information from us, obviously, we'll provide it, provide whatever breakdowns are necessary to, to look at it, but, uh, I think one of the things that we were hoping for, once we get through the whole budget, then we can be able to jockey some of these costs and figure out which ones you wanna support, the ones you don't wanna support. And then we can improve and figure out what we're gonna do.
Well, you know, uh, for me, I'm not, you know, the decision on this doesn't matter what the cost is. I think it's just the logistics of it. You know, I, I, you know, if, if we had nobody in town that was having people, you know, come over, like in Tom's development, I'd say, let's just go for it. We'll figure it out. We'll put it in, you know, we'll figure it out in our budget. It's not a cost thing, it's a, it's a logistics thing for, to me. I think really, that's how we gotta look at it, because I think that's the biggest factor. It's the logistics of it. Yeah, the cost is more, but the, the cost for me, John, Tom, the cost is cheaper.
Yeah, right.
You know?
Yeah, but for the cost of somebody that doesn't use it, it's.
It's double.
It's double.
Right, so that's the logistics piece, that's what I'm getting at, the logistics piece of it.
Right.
And that's where I'm struggling. To me, I, I would say we stick with the punch cards. Because of that.
Yeah.
So many complaints about those punch cards, and, oh, I've had to go punch my card twice, but you've only got to punch once, we have the same amount of trash.
But I feel like now you're just resolving one problem.
But that's, that's changed though as of late, right? Because we've enforced that, we've got with them, that's changed as of late. It's, it's per bag now, and it's been pretty consistent when I've gone.
Yeah, me too.
Punch.
And a guy even checked out my sticker last night, it's up there.
Wow.
Couldn't believe it. I know.
Did or he did?
He did. Came up to my truck and pointed at it and said, you gotta get a new one.
Yeah. Yeah, he did, did to mine too.
Did he? Yeah.
Yeah. It, the other thing too, and, and one thing that concerns me is like, I have fairly little household waste, so when I go up there, I, I get like maybe, well, now it's two punches, one for recycle, one for trash.
Yeah.
So it's two punches a week. Uh, punch is fifty cents, so it's a dollar a week, fifty-two dollars. I'm looking at this, um, so from fifty-two dollars, my taxes would go up maybe a hundred and sixty dollars. And it's like, I'm a very low usage guy, but I'm subsidizing guys who go in with a pickup truck full of, full of garbage.
Right.
Would normally pay like a lot of punches. So it's like, yeah, I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, because they're paying for usage as opposed to like what house you live in. So, I don't know. But that's another side.
It's a great, it's a great discussion to have, and I'm sure that, yeah, at some point, your, your folks will flush it out.
Well, we need to flush it out relatively soon, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm not sure, we're waiting at some point. Why don't we make a decision now, you know? Well, you can make a decision now. If you, if you feel you have enough information or wanna make that decision, that, then that's fine too. We can let Casella know how we're gonna move, what direction we're gonna move forward in, and so they can prepare for that as well.
So you guys have a, of the year on this contract to be at?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Every correct and same cost is dollar and a half, maybe three fifty, four dollars a week for most of the homes.
I, I, I think it really.
I'm like Theo, I've only got two punches, but you know, if you've got a house full of kids, you're probably, you know, generate a lot more trash.
Yeah. I know, but there's always pickup trucks that are like. I know whether they just go once a month or.
Could be.
Or a while, but it's like, wow. Yeah, I don't go every week. When I go, sometimes I got, you know, four, five, six bags out of this big bin that I put my trash in, and.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's like three, four punches when I go, you know, at least, so.
Okay. But see, you, you have a lot of stuff. But that's unfair, when you bring a lot of stuff, it costs you more money.
Yeah.
Whereas now it'd just be everyone pays taxes on it. I don't know.
Yes, my, my point is that that's pretty much, I think, affordable. Also, side say this, a lot of those pickup trucks you're talking about don't have stickers on them. Third of either. So it's this, proof that.
Yeah, the traffic will be tremendously easy.
I mean, it's, it's better now. I mean, just, yeah, you know, I, you take your bag out, they just tell you to throw it.
Yeah. Take care of it yourself, you know?
Yeah, the first time. Yeah, I brought it over towards the scale and they say, two bags, just throw it in. It's thrilling. Oh, okay. So, I mean, I, again, I think it's much better now. I think, I agree. I, I would like to continue as is and see how it goes, and, you know, with the new management there, with the new people, with the new, and see how things go, and revisit it again next year, but.
Well, if I, if I understand you, Ryan, you've got another year to go on this contract, how can we do it this year? Well, they're asking us to do something, because they're losing this shirt.
They're losing on.
We gotta smoke a deal. And, and they're losing this shirt. And I'm just afraid if we, if we don't play in the same pond, um, that when the time comes and they need to exercise their authority over whatever contract we have, we may really get gouged, and I'm hoping that doesn't happen.
But then we could blame Casella, not ourselves.
That's correct. Somebody else can carry it, and you're really paying some competition. Yeah.
Well, we're on the subject of the transfer station. I'm sure this is probably come up in the past, but one problem I have every spring is, we pick up about three truckloads of branches and shrubs and gardeners wild on top of trees in the winter. Is there any way that something could be set up up there where we could get rid of downed tree branches and whatever?
It's always been a problem. We used to have a pile of that stuff.
Yeah.
You hire the tug grinder, come in, the problem is, is the fire has to fall, depending on the time of year, but it's a problem. There'd be more fees in there than to handle. You're gonna have to hire somebody to come in to chip stuff that's been brought in and dumped. So you're talking about a tug grinder with a bunch, an excavator, some load man to do it. Deliver it, how much you can pile up, what area you have to pile it in. I know it's a problem. Not everybody wants to go rent a chipper. You can only run it certain times, so it's a problem. Tell someone I can. It's not something that you can go up once a week and chip. And that stuff gets in, thrown in. And some of the things, when we were getting those loads, you would have all bags of stuff in the bottom of it. Tires. One day I drive the gas, and one day it's. Well, I had to try it, so.
Yeah.
Take it with you. You didn't have to pick it up on the road because they had its license. That's what you get. And a lot of times, we get the stuff just down over the hill from what was originally all this stuff, but I didn't know anything about it. There's a great big pile. Somebody cut up some dead trees, and then they just dumped them off the side of that stuff.
We're not giving the tire jumper, so traveling the, the roads at night, throwing tires onto the road, are we?
Have we had?
I know we've had it in the past.
We did once a few years ago. I don't live on.
We picked over a hundred tires.
Yeah, it was a hundred and fifty, all of the time. Yeah, somebody had a little they need to get rid of, and it just went down the road, and somebody in the back of the truck just did all that.
We had workout. Thinking about it.
Don't think about it. Roger, earlier when you were talking, you had mentioned something about the compactor. Are we having an issue? Are we gonna have an issue with a compactor? Because there's nothing here for that.
We have money in this year's budget to replace one of the compactors, and I was told by one of, uh, pine trees guys, that if you can avoid buying this now because of price of metal, he said they're almost double what it should be. He was hoping the prices to go down. I found another outfit there out of New Hampshire, someplace, uh, Rawnsford, I think they were.
Yeah.
East Coast Recycling or something like that. They went up there, changed the switch in that number two compactor, made some adjustments on it, and it's where it's moved, as they've been up there. So, there's money in this year's budget to replace it, but it's just crazy money to do. So, so you'd shoot it back to you on price for one of those.
As I go back, we, we've got, we've got a open top that's up to their facility now. They would like to put a new water in it for twenty, what, twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred bucks. They said the rest of the can looks good, but the water is, Roger saw the pictures, it didn't look like it was.
What you're talking, I thought it had holes in it.
Yeah.
So the can be really old. Like any other dump body, over the course of time, it's wavy and it doesn't want to dump. So that's the biggest thing, I think, but kind of two of people talking about replacing one this year.
Right, so you're supposed to get back. Yeah.
So if it is, it does make more sense to spend twenty hundred bucks.
Right.
But I'm not sure what a can is right now, because we've paid seven grand for this, for this craziness. But you take most of that.
I think they bring that back, but they're just waiting for.
Was they waiting to hear from us, I think?
What's that? I'm sorry. I just wanted to know if they were just bringing that back, if they're just waiting to hear from us. They're waiting to hear from us, whether or not we wanna repair it or not. So, I mean, we could talk about that on Monday, let me, you know, us guys make a decision on that.
Yeah, I'll talk to somebody there, find out what the problem is. And those things this time of year, stuff raises, there's no covers over them, so they can snow ice them, they, a lot of these things, empty them sometimes. So.
Okay.
Clear and clear all the time.
But she is supposed to give us a, a number on the, on the other one.
Right, something you can.
Yeah.
As opposed to fixing that.
Sure.
Don't think we're gonna learn very much to do. I'd make a motion. That's appropriate.
And what would you call option one? Stay the way it is now, or go with?
No, go with the, uh, option one, tax dollars.
Oh, okay. So, you have a motion that you would, uh, like to go with the, uh, second option and put it on, uh, the tax rolls for getting rid of the hustle trash or recycling? Okay.
I'll serve.
So we got a motion by Jack and a second by John to add that into the budget. Further discussion on that?
Oh. Two eighty-one, seven eighty-five.
Correct. Two eighty-one, seven eighty-five. Further discussion?
And then we're going to start next year. So that will contract off.
No, it'll be going effective as soon as, uh, logic gets approved. Well, it'll be going in effect when the budget gets approved. It should be in, in July.
Despite the fact we don't have a contract.
That is correct.
I think Keith, Keith's concern is valid, though, that whatever we might say by sticking to the contract for a while, we have so we'll probably get it out of our mind. Some guys.
Well, that's what this would be, right? The one twenty-four, forty-five is a compromise, is that? No, the one twenty-four, four, uh, forty-five would be our regular contract. Or that's what we have now. This would be what we, what we're doing right now. Punch cards. You get the, you know, uh, there's no weighing, no trash, they would have to do the same thing that's in place right now.
So what were the three options that you brought to us?
Well, there were three, but I, I threw out the top three, but number three, that was curbside, there you go. Yeah, that was over, that was over six hundred thousand. So we eliminated that one.
Do we have a quote from Casella on if your status quo, do we have a quote from Casella? I know that the contract goes another year, but they've come back to you and said that there should should be a higher amount, haven't they?
Well, yes and no. They're gonna, they're gonna honor the contract. Their issue was, they were losing money because their attendants weren't weighing.
Okay.
They weren't punching cards. We've eliminated that, because now we have a solid.
Demo.
Right, right. Now we have a, now we have a solid system, I think, in place to take care of that.
They're comfortable with the contract that we have now, as long as their workforce is doing what they're supposed to do.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Any further discussion? All, so, all is in favor of the motion? Option one, yeah. One that, uh, Jack just, we got one, two.
Two hundred and eighty-one, seven eighty-five.
Correct. All opposed? Yeah.
Mark, it's in action.
That's exactly what it is. Good, thank you. All right, um, the other stuff I have is just, uh, there, there were several questions. The first thing I wanted to do was to give you a fresh copy of the, uh, fire department budget. You guys are all set. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Appreciate your discussions. Uh, the other thing I did was just provide you a memo. Because we were talking about additional full-time employees for fire service. I gave you a memo as part of that package, uh, indicating to you that for every ninety-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-four cents would be one additional full-time. would be one additional full-time, full-time. So I'm not sure if you're prepared to make a decision on whether we're gonna hire one additional full-time fireman, whether we're gonna hire two, whether we're not gonna hire any. Uh, it's particularly, uh, it's certainly up to you folks, but, uh, that gives you an idea of what it would be. Uh, what I anticipated to be on the tax rate, if nothing else changes other than our value. For the budget that you have does not, and I want to repeat, does not have any full-time staff in it. So that three twelve, six twenty-five would go up by ninety-two thousand dollars if you added one. And one hundred and eighty-four thousand if you add two. All set for that right now? Um, the next thing was, um, at your last meeting, I was asked about hourly rate history. So I provided a sheet giving you nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. What my proposal was for, for the upcoming year and the hourly rate. So you could compare it. I think Dan had brought it up. Uh, we, we talked about that a little bit. So. Did you use those numbers? I know Dan put together a spreadsheet.
Yeah. My idea is I took Keith's number, put it, put it in a spreadsheet, kind of broke it down and added percentages, added, what the proposed salary would be, um, and then what the proposed yearly increase would be. Um, and then I just stuffed in blue, which is numbers that I threw just for discussion. I'm not sure with the sensible board. I know that there was a discussion last time about concern about five point nine to six percent salary increases. What happened? Discussion on this now, but.
Well, Keith, your proposed one, is that just the five point nine percent increase or is there merit?
Yeah. I'm sorry. The five point nine.
Is that just five point nine increase or that's your proposing or is there merit?
The only, the only additional merit would be, would be whatever's set, any longevity.
That's it. Okay, okay.
When I, when I, you know, put this into the formula in Excel, um, if you look at, um, in red where it says TM proposed percentages, those are the actual percentages, six point oh six, six point one seven, six point one six, five point nine, five point nine. That's just the salary. That doesn't include the health piece or the.
Correct. Those are just salaries.
That's just the salary. Okay. And then when you look at, um, the next column over is what that salary would be at fifty-two weeks. And then the TM proposed, that's, that's what their bump would be. You know, starting from the top is an eight thousand dollar, four thousand, whatever. I just kind of put all that information over. And then the stuff over in the blue, I kind of, you know, threw some numbers. For discussion, again, I just threw those numbers in there so that we could have a discussion. And down at the bottom with the numbers that I threw, down at the bottom in the, in the green is really, if we went with, those are the reduced, the savings that we would get, not the savings, but the extra money that we would get. They would realize.
Yeah, for, for some of you that process that I used was I just used the consumer price index. It was five point nine, so I just plugged five point nine in. Now, to the selectmen's credit, last year I proposed one percent because that's what the CPI was and the board went ahead. It modified that to three or three point two, something along those lines. So, um, you, you have tremendous amount of flexibility as to what you want to do here, but for me consistently, I tried to save with the CPI for argument's sake that, uh, then you can ultimately make your decision what you want to do.
If, if you look at twenty twenty-one, um, you know, you've got going down the line, you know, we bumped things up to three, but there are some folks that got, you know, five point two six, eleven percent. Remember we bumped up the, the, the fire, the, the, not the fire, but the paramedics. We bumped those up to try to keep, I mean, there was, you know, eleven percent raise, nine percent raise, which we need to do to keep those folks. But to turn around and follow it again this year with, with another six percent, I, I just, I, I'm not, it's just me, but I'm not in favor of like that much of a raise.
I think you hit the nail on the head when you said that you have to do some of the raises just to keep these people around. I think that's much more valid point than just looking at it and saying, well, six percent is too much or five point nine is too much. Uh, even though social security recipients got five percent this year. We begin by on like one percent or two percent for the last ten years. So I don't have a real problem with how Keith came up with the process of the raise. I think inflation has taken its toll and if we don't at least keep up with inflation like they would, it's just gonna be.
I, I don't think so, but that's just my, you know, that's, that's my opinion. I, you know, I think that if you, if you start getting below three percent, then that's an issue, but I think we can work numbers between three and four and grab some of that money somewheres else and use it for other things, you know, things that are certainly, but I'm not gonna argue about it, but I mean, that's just my, that's my position.
So at the end of the day, you're saying, we said thirty-six, four.
If we go with those numbers, then we can play with those numbers, whatever, right? You know, they're not all even. You know, I threw in some extra percentages on just what I was thinking, you know? Um, but again, it's just numbers so that we could have a discussion. Great work. Thank you.
Yeah, if you come up with, uh, you know, for, for me, if you come up with a percentage number that's less than five point nine, uh, just let me know. I can plug all those numbers in to give you, um, what impact it will have throughout the whole benefit package, including the salary.
I think from, from our standpoint, it's, you know, we, we, the selectman will control his budget and then the rest is up to him. I mean, I threw those numbers in, but these are all his employees. So the rest are all up, up to him. I mean, we certainly can have some input on it, but for me, it's however he discusses it, that, that's his role, right? So.
Uh, the last thing that, uh, that you, you, there was questions upon was the, uh, TIF follow-up. So I provided within your packet, uh, just some general information on the TIF, on the utility safety TIF. It talked about what we could use the funding within the, the TIF for. So, you know, obviously we could use it for a pumper. We've done, we purchased the, uh, skin truck, uh, fire tank, a skid tank. We, we bought a trailer. We're using some of the money to pay for the tack pumper. Uh, and then the other thing that it can be used for was the, uh, fire bay improvements. So there's, uh, money in there to, uh, to also take care of, to take care of that as well. The other thing is that, uh, just so you know, that the utility safety TIF goes to twenty forty-three. So there'll be a, right now, we're anticipating a little over fifty-seven, fifty-eight thousand dollars coming in every year for the utility safety TIF. Primarily right now, it's going to pay for our attack pumper that we purchased a few years back. The other one is the, uh, the cottage TIF, the rental cottages TIF. Dan, I, I tried to lay out here, that's in place until twenty thirty-nine. And then I provided to you how that's captured. Uh, so you have an idea of what cost and how it's, uh, how all that money is, uh, is put aside and who gets what. And then I provided to you what the funding within our side could be used for. Uh, administration of professional services. Uh, you could use it for, uh, sidewalk construction on Route One. Municipal sewer construction project.
Roger left.
You could use it for a commercial moving loan fund or a grant program. Use for marketing of businesses. And, uh, it looks like arts location was part of the thing that they talked about. And you could purchase, use it for economic development, staff salaries, consulting fees. So those are the options that you can use that funding for.
Quite a amount for some. Didn't a percentage go into the general fund?
For what?
Twenty-five. Twenty-five percent goes into.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's only seventy-five percent.
Right. Twenty-five goes in.
We get to twenty-five.
Just the general fund. And then we capture seventy-five percent of assessed value, which thirty-three comes to us for our projects. Sixty-seven gets returned to the developer for his work.
So do you know, Keith, what that amount was that goes into the general fund?
Well, like, yeah, I could figure it out for you.
As, as of what it was, what we have, like, because it'll definitely be more this year.
Correct. Correct. Yeah, we do it every, we do it every year. We have to, we have to report on it to our state. So there's a, and I think I provide that, uh, a statement to you guys every year, sometimes part of your package, so I'll pull that back out. Well, those are the things that I was asked for, so I asked, so I wanted to make sure you had them. Oh, God, yes. Yeah.
And there's still a solid plan despite Joe's passing.
Correct. The issue they're gonna have now is they, they want to get into phase six. Joe was, Joe was arguing with us. I don't know where it's going at this point. He was arguing with us because he was under the impression that phase six was part of the, uh, TIF zone and it is not. So I'm not quite sure if they're gonna come back and ask for a modification to the TIF to capture that. But nobody stepped forward quite yet. And I know that the planning office is well aware of the fact it's not part of the package, TIF package.
Although we'd have to go back to the state if they do that.
Yeah, you'd have to go back to, to, to annual town meeting to get approval.
But it also has to go to, before that.
State would have to get involved too.
Make sure that everything's kosher.
What exactly is phase six? The water park?
I think they have another, I think they have another section of they want, want to put some houses in, but it's more units in. And I think what's happened is the popularity of them selling these units has encouraged them to do the next phase. So I, I don't think they expected to be in the phase five or five six by now.
Is phase six a new phase that wasn't in the original plan?
I think so.
It must be because when we did the TIF, it was the whole. Yeah, so they must have decided to head a little bit more towards the water tower around here.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Um, I'm not sure. I'm sure there's a, there's a, a group that's probably heading that up. I knew that he had investors from.
Yeah, we get an email or something from somebody that said that it's, it's still moving forward. It's, and I don't remember who that was from, but.
Is that Janair? What's his name? Light? No, not Light.
Yeah, Light.
Light, yeah, Janair.
Rick White, yeah.
That's all I have for tonight. What we, what we have left to at least converse through would be, uh, our capital discussions, uh, for additional for fire. Uh, we still got, um, we still got recreation to do. I think recreation is the last budget. And that will wrap up our first blush through this entire, uh, entire budget at this point. I'll give you some time to ponder on, on, um, the wage package too. I, if, if you want, I could do some, you know, three, four and five, you know, I could do three or four percent. Give you an idea of what those impacts would be as well. Highly up to you. Sure. All right. When's the next meeting?
You do have a spreadsheet. I sent it to you, so.
Well, two weeks from today is the seventeenth.
I like Saint Patrick's Day too, but I, I'm not. No, I, I think Theo had something on the first of Wednesday, the first Wednesday. So we could go to sixteen.
Yeah.
You want?
Shall I do Tuesday or?
Yeah, I still won't.
I'm sure.
I'm, I'm heading north on the sixteenth that night, so I mean, I, that depends on what you are talking about on the sixteenth.
Well, we're gonna finish up rec and we're gonna get into the capital.
Okay. I'm sorry, Phil, but I didn't hear what you said.
And, uh, knowing you, you'll probably give me your comments anyway, so that's fine.
That's our job, right?
Make sure this is shared.
That's what we're supposed to be doing.
So do you want to give the sixteenth or seventeenth? Makes no difference to me. What do you think, Sean?
I was making a comment, it's a Saint Patrick's Day, so.
So do you want to go sixteen?
Whatever works for people.
Yeah, sixteen.
What about me?
That's fine. We're sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah, I'm gonna pregame.
And you'll do, you'll do the capital and you'll do the rec on the sixteen?
Yes. I'll give, when are you leaving?
Wednesday night.
Okay, I'll have packets. I'll have your information. I'll pride in that. We're gonna make sure your truck breaks down for you. So, um, yeah, I'll get the packets. I'll take a look at it. Give me your comments if you have anything. Thank you much.
I just threw different. What I did is I just based on, I figured that.
Dan, I'm waiting for your motion. All those people in favor of adjuring? All right. Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, nice.
It can be the same thing all the way across.
Right, I mean, that's, yeah, I just wanted to look at the thank you calls, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, because personally.